Are we working?
Now you are.
Now we're working. Call this meeting to order, and I'd like to welcome all our guests. I'd like to start with Laurie Salafia from the military. If you have some words for us from the military.
Quick quick remarks. Um, I would like to recognize anyone who is in this room who has served in the military. Please stand up. Stand up. I expect that. And so everyone on, if somebody's family members that are serving in the military, and at least everyone in this room knows somebody who has served in the military. So I would like you and everyone in the room, as we go out tomorrow and enjoy our day off, run our errands, to please think about the veterans who served this country. We are the land of the free because of the brave. And please remember, thank you, thank you for your service.
Thank you Laurie.
Thank you.
And I would like to also welcome Zach Potter. Zach, there's Zach, from Sanford Herald. And if you'd now join me for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and if you would now stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public commenters tonight, so I will proceed with our beliefs as a school system. All students can achieve at high levels regardless of ethnicity, race, or socio-economic background. Education is economic development. Data analysis should guide instructional decisions. Quality teachers are the key to effective student learning. All students and teachers should have access to innovative instructional practices and technology. Safe and nurturing schools are a prerequisite for teaching and learning. Effective and efficient support systems are necessary to support student and employee success. Positive relationships are the key for effective community partnerships. Is there a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
Is there a-
For February ten, two thousand fifteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the agenda is approved. I would also entertain a motion to approve the minutes for October thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, October twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, and October twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of October thirteenth, October twenty-sixth, and October twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries, the minutes are approved. We can now continue with reports, and I'd like to call on Mark Stevens to present our audit report. And you should have an audit report, that's the blue book, everybody should-
Anybody get one of those? You didn't get one of those? I didn't get one tonight, I have one, I forgot.
You do have it at home.
I do. Okay. If you don't have one, you're welcome. We're good.
I'm kidding, but um, tonight we had Mrs. Dale playing, she's a partner with the county firm, and she's been playing for my team, and we have presented our audit results for the first year. We have all the four teams, and we have like, uh, 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 we have like, board members, and a colleague, and we have like, uh, our audit is basically separated into two parts. Uh, we perform a financial audit, and we also perform a political science audit, which uh, covers the federal and state uh, compliance, uh, and we have like, uh, included in the report that we've issued, that each of you have copied, are a total of four audit letters that relate to these two uh, audit sections. On page one of the report is our financial statement, audit opinion letter. And it is a clean, unmodified report, and that is exactly what you want to receive. And that basically means that we feel as though all the amounts that are presented in the report are reliable and free from any material misstatement, and presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And a unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance that you can receive in a financial statement audit. Okay? And on page fifty-two of the report is the first of three letters that we issued that relate to the compliance testing, uh, which also covers the testing of internal controls and the expenditure of state and federal grant awards. And all three of these letters are also clean, unmodified reports, uh, which means there were no internal control weaknesses, no findings, and no question costs reflected in any of these letters. Uh, so again, these letters, they're as good as it's gonna get in writing from an audit standpoint. Okay? Your fund balance levels at year end and all of the board's major funds were deemed to be adequate, and the district was deemed to be in good financial condition as of June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Um, so again, overall, the audit went very well. We were very pleased with what we saw from both a financial and a compliance perspective. And uh, anyone that has any questions about anything that was in the report, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions from the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say that we uh, we uh, he came and made the presentation to the uh, to the finance committee, and Ms. Bowen and myself asked him to uh, to come and make a presentation to the whole board, and uh, we are quite satisfied with what we heard.
I also wanted to add to that, 'cause this was the first time that I'd sat on this particular committee during this time, and, and he answered a slew of questions from my point of just trying to understand exactly what we had in front of us, and I really appreciate the documentation and the time that I had to review it and so forth. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Dale, and, and Mark. How many years have we been recognized for our financial compliance as being stellar? Anybody have that information?
Nineteen years.
Nineteen years we've been recognized for a stellar financial report.
That's awesome.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to recognize Mark and some of the staff members that are here tonight.
Please.
Just recognize them for all their great efforts in making this, making this work. Making it possible.
Now, I would like to thank them for their hard work. We're quite a burden when we come in, but they, they do a great job. They do a great job of getting things ready and, and trying to get us in and out. But really, overall, they, y'all have a very well-run financial department. Sure that we go to a lot of places, and y'all have a very well-operated finance staff.
We certainly appreciate you and, and your, uh, your firm for making us legal. And Mr. Stevens, compliments on you and your staff from the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, under Chairman's report, uh, the first item is the North Carolina School Board Association Conference is scheduled for November sixteenth through the eighteenth, two thousand fifteen. At the Curry Center in Greensboro, five of us are currently registered to attend on Monday, the sixteenth. The opening session begins at nine a.m., and uh, why don't we plan to carpool and meet at the central office at seven forty-five, and we can arrange how we're gonna ride. Also, on Monday, November the sixteenth, to complicate matters, we're to meet with the county commissioners concerning the new Wicker school site at six-thirty. So I looked over the schedule, and it looks to me that if we leave Greensboro after the first general session at four o'clock, we can be home in time for the six-thirty meeting with, with the county commissioners. On Tuesday, the second day of the meeting, at four o'clock, uh, our, our board nominated the Lee County Board of Commissioners for the North Carolina School Board County Commissioners of the Year Award, and they have been selected. The Board of Commissioners will be recognized at the North Carolina School Board Awards Ceremony on Tuesday, November seventeenth, at four, four-thirty p.m. If you're interested in attending, please let Susan Brit know by Thursday, November the twelfth. There will be a fifty-five dollar fee for those who plan to attend. Afterwards, we have dinner reservations at Outback House at six forty-five p.m., if you're interested. So I think it would certainly be in our best interest being that our county commissioners are gonna be recognized as the County Commissioners of the Year for the North Carolina School Board Association for the State. And I think it certainly would behoove us to have a good representation. Uh, I guess my question would be, well, we'll, we'll address that. We'll address the fee at some other time. And I would like to make a bit of a statement. As reported in the media, uh, comments have been made recently questioning the value of teacher assistance, and I'm sure most everybody is aware of that. And I think it's appropriate that on behalf of the Board, Board of Education, we express our sincere appreciation for all that our teacher assistants do for our students. It would be difficult to imagine our school system without teacher assistance, in fact. So from the Board of Education, thank you for your service to our school, and be assured you have our total support. And uh, we can continue now with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this time I'd like to recognize Superintendent's Extra Effort Award. And uh, it's not, it's not very often that a, that a recipient of the Extra Effort Award gets so much publicity for what they did. I would like to ask Gabriel Reynolds, who is uh, distance, charges the Distance Lab here at Lee County High School, and also the girls' basketball varsity coach, to come forward. Gabriel uh, helped organize and actually got them down here, the uh, WNCN uh, pep rally last Friday. And those who don't know who, what, what that is, uh, WNCN holds a pep rally every Friday at a sort of a regional uh, school in the area. And uh, uh, Gabriel begged and borrowed and sort of encouraged uh, WNCN to come down uh, for last Friday, and uh, it made for really early morning for everybody. But um, it was a really neat experience for our students and our sponsors, and not only was the football team recognized uh, for their efforts, but also our fall sports in general, which a lot of times, some of the, some of the other fall sports don't get the same type of spotlight as football does, which was great. And our band and cheerleaders and some of our sort of most diehard fans uh, were there. What, what time did everybody have to be there?
Everyone had to be there, four forty-five in the morning. I was there at three a.m. to uh, meet WNCN, to help get everything set up.
I, I thought our sponsors and students did an awesome job on the air, and I, I thought brought some very nice publicity to Lee County High School. And uh, if I remember correctly, Ms. Wilson, uh, we were told by um, the staff from Channel Seventeen that it was the largest pep rally that, pep rally that they had had. Yeah. And, and I tell you, I, I can't remember the, the person from Channel Seventeen, what was her-
Allison Corfano.
Yeah. She looked like she had a blast with, with things. And uh, it was neat to watch it on TV, and, and I thought our kids did a great job. But I think, Gabriel, all the thanks go to you and the other folks, but for you to help organize this and get them down here, and uh, and, and just getting everybody out there at four forty-five a.m. in the morning. So congratulations.
Thanks.
And uh, one of the traditions of this is that you get your picture taken before you come down here.
If you all have a stay in the lake, it's off of WNCN's uh, Friday Night Sports, Friday night, which you can see everything from the pep rally, and, and see our kids, see our kids coming here.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I, I think that I'm on with the uh, the student manager, Phil, that's our student manager.
Yes.
The uh, some of the students were like their DFP and ACR.
Yeah.
I think that report from Channel Seventeen had it on at one point, too.
This time I'd like to ask Jim Atkinson to come forward with the Clean School of the Month.
Good evening again. Again, this is the second monthly Clean School of the Month Award for two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Hard work put into by Deep River Elementary School. So I'm asking Ms. London to come up and present that to her staff and say a few words about it.
So this is Ms. Joyce Williams, and she is our wonderful dedicated, one of our wonderful dedicated custodians, and Ms. Margie Reeves. And um, our head custodian, Mr. Harold Campbell. Um, I think he always comes up with a good excuse of why he can't come to board meetings. Um, I think y'all intimidate him, so at some point, you'll just have to come out to Deep River and meet him, but um, and he also is a veteran, and we honored him at school today um, with a lot of the children. I just said on the morning announcements that they get a chance to give him a high five or a thank you, a handshake to do that, and he, he did not know that I, he was taking up the trash when I made the announcement, and so he got a lot of accolades today, and it embarrassed him a lot, which I enjoyed. But these two ladies with Mr. Campbell, they do such a great job. And I know I tell you this every time, but please continue to do this to honor these folks, because um, they work so hard to keep our buildings clean and, and presentable to all visitors, and um, I just, I love these ladies, and we love Mr. Campbell, and we're very thankful that, to get this recognition, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Atkinson. Congratulations again to Deep, Deep River. That sign's gone to that school a lot of times, if I remember correctly.
Yes, it has.
Um, finally tonight, Dr. Smith, on the agenda, want to give a brief overview of uh, and a little bit of the accountability update from some of the things that have been going on since our last meeting. A, a lot of this work, particularly at the, at the secondary level, I mean, middle and high school, has gone through our lead teachers. Um, we, we have our weekly meeting where our lead teachers have been coming in after they've been meeting with teachers throughout the school district. They've been in group meetings of teachers, in planning periods, and after-school meetings, et cetera. And uh, a lot of times, we've gotten really good feedback from that in reference to what we're doing with, within the classroom, per se, by teacher, and also sort of on a building level perspective. Uh, we have given our first group of benchmark assessments, and we're just getting the results back in, which are currently being analyzed. Um, and my hope is that at the next meeting, I'll be able to share some of the areas of work we're gonna be doing based upon those results. Um, and I'll include some areas of intervention that we're probably gonna be doing and some areas of enrichment as well. We also um, have, have begun sort of tweaking already our school improvement plans that we've, have been either presented to you or being presented to you tonight. Um, like I said at the last meeting, um, you know, they're, they're always changing, and, and I, I think that's a positive thing, and shows that we're making adjustments according to the conditions and the data that we get back. We're also doing the same thing with our pacing guides at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And uh, and our, our lead teachers and our principals and teachers have been adjusting throughout the course of the year based upon what we're getting back with data. And a lot of that, some of that's based upon, based upon benchmark assessments. It's also based upon teacher assessments as well, which I, I think is still a gold standard for, for getting back information to how to help students. Uh, we've also, as you already know, made some decisions on supplementary materials for, for teachers and students with supplementary materials and additional support for students for reading, for students, and in the content areas that are sort of more content-specific, and we feel very good about it as far as being aligned with what we're trying to teach in class. We've also uh, have organized our after-school tutoring sessions, and we're earlier on that than what typically we have been, and uh, we're gonna be tying in transportation to that as well. Uh, something that I'm, I, I'm not gonna go into too much detail tonight, but I'll be able to talk about it um, in a much better fashion at the next meeting. Uh, we're organizing some community support for that, for after-school tutoring, and uh, some tutoring in school as well. I'll, I'll have a little bit more information for you on that at the next meeting. Uh, we also have a, a plan that's near completion that will be instituted for second semester with ACT tutoring support at the high school level. And uh, as I know before, our school improvement plans are being reviewed again at the central office. Of course, you all have already reviewed some of those uh, school improvement plans as well. We're also beginning to do some initial work. This comes from the lead teacher level, pre and post-assessments, and conversations we're having with uh, with uh, with teachers. Um, overall, I, I believe that our, our, our teachers and all the other educators in our school district have taken on uh, the, the growth sort of goals that we have, analyzing data, and, and have a serious urgency about them for this. And, and I think you all can probably sense that as well, but, but I think it's worth repeating with that.
Questions for me?
I just, thank you for the update, Dr. Brian. It's, it's, it's good to hear what's going on, and I just want to kind of pity you back a little bit on what you're saying about the, the urgency. I'm getting that sense definitely as I go around to the different schools in the district and visiting and talking to teachers and principals. There's definitely, and at the curriculum instruction meetings that's coming out, definitely a sense of urgency, but there's also this sense of energy that I'm feeling. You know, that um, they know it's urgent, they're working on it, but this, their sense of urgency of let's get in there, get this done, let's make this happen. So very positive energy I'm feeling, and I've been hearing a lot about, you know, the alignment, you know, working on that alignment, and I, I know they're out there working hard. I mean, that, that's, you know, that's what I'm hearing, of course, and um, so I'm really excited about moving forward with this, because I can just feel that energy, and I think that um, you know, we're, we have a lot of work to do, but I feel like we're gonna really give it all we got.
Yeah, no doubt about that.
Thank you, Dr. Brian. Um, we can now continue with committee reports. Curriculum Instruction Committee, Tamara Brogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have been very busy at Curriculum Instruction. We've had three meetings since we had our last board meeting in September. On October twenty-first, we met at Southernly High School for our high school curriculum instruction meeting. Uh, we talked about our new science lead teacher, who's here in the audience this evening. Um, we also talked about the update from the lead teachers, a little bit what Dr. Brian talked about in his report, about the lead teachers and how they're working throughout the district. And I, I know that they've been visiting a lot of teachers, working hard with teachers, and doing a lot of work throughout the whole district, so we talked about that. We also had an update on Dr. Lynn Warren's new position as a literary specialist, and she's been going around to the high schools, working with them, uh, working on, and helping with enhancing literacy. We also talked about changing, possibly changing a structure of the curriculum instruction meetings. Uh, we had a good discussion about that amongst the high school Curriculum Instruction Committee. And our next high school Curriculum Instruction Committee meeting is December second at Lee Early College. Then, a week later, or, or a little bit later, we had October twenty-eighth, we met at West Lee Middle School for our middle school Curriculum Instruction Committee meeting. We went over the school improvement plans for all the high schools, I mean, sorry, middle schools. Uh, they were very, you know, they were detailed, they did a good job with those plans. They talked to the whole committee about them, and, and kind of like I just mentioned with after Dr. Brian's report, uh, they talked a lot about growth, and we went over areas that they know that we need improvement, areas that are doing well. They talked about how, you know, their different goals and how they're gonna implement them throughout the year. And um, so that took up, you know, most of our time for that meeting. But also, Dr. Chapel talked about the benchmark and EVOs data coming out soon that Dr. Brian mentions coming, that they're analyzing. And our next middle school curriculum instruction meeting will be at East Lee on January thirteenth. Then, uh, last week, on November fourth, we met at Ingram Elementary for our elementary uh, curriculum instruction meeting. And for our elementary schools, we went over their school improvement plans, and we have seven elementary schools, so it took a while to go through that. But once again, they talked about areas of need, that need to be improved and growth. They talked about um, things that are going well. They talked about their goals and how they plan to implement their goals throughout the year. We also talked about getting together as a curriculum and instruction committee mid-year to go over the progress of the goals that were mentioned in the school improvement plans, and we also talked about doing it at the end of the year to see how things went throughout the school year. So there is definitely um, a lot of energy to do that, so I see us moving forward on that. And I'd like to do that for the high school, middle schools as well. Um, so one thing I mentioned just a minute ago, but I also have met, saw at these meetings for the curriculum instruction is all that energy that I mentioned. Definitely, there's a lot of excitement and rigor going into this year from everyone at the committees, and I feel like everyone's just really kind of charging in on this and going forward with these plans and, and making the changes that need to be made. So that was exciting to see that. So there were some good meetings, and I'm looking forward to the next ones. Our next meeting for elementary curriculum instruction is January twentieth, and that will be at Greenwood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Brogan. Uh, we can continue with the Facilities and Technology Committee, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our last meeting was held on October twenty-seventh, and uh, we've got a couple items on our consent agenda tonight where it pertains to a gate over here at Lee County High School and some playground equipment at Florida Ellen Knight. Uh, and our next meeting will be held November twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Uh, we can continue with Finance Committee, Mr. Akonoshu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting last uh, month, and uh, we uh, listened to the uh, look at the report, uh, the convention report, and the uh, audit report, and the budget amendment also, and uh, budget calendar, all of those are the uh, present agenda for, for this meeting. We will not meet until January because of the uh, budget calendar and uh, all the presentations that we made.
Thank you, Mr. Akonoshu. Uh, let's continue with Policy Committee, uh, Mrs. Bowen.
Uh, the Policy Committee met, and we met for an extended period of time, and I would love to tell you what date that was on, and I don't have that written. I'm scanning diligently. Ah-ha. We met on October twentieth, and we reviewed thirty-five different policies coming from the state, and through our deliberation, five of those were delayed for later discussion, either because implementation now would conflict with other things already happening, and if we had that leeway, we, we pushed them off to save a little bit of headache on the part of our, our school administrators. So what we have tonight, and, and you guys will listen to me talk for way too long in a few minutes, we do have thirty policies on for first reading tonight. Out of those thirty, those that generated the most discussion, and I think have the biggest impact, one of them was on employee use of social media, so I would- ask the board to definitely read through those policies particularly, and if you have any feedback on those, because those are the ones that are really gonna affect everyday operation, and if there's anything in those that we think we need to codify, or loosen, or strengthen, or whatever, those particularly, if you read through those and give any feedback to our committee, that would be very appreciated. Um, so we will have thirty on for first reading tonight, so any feedback on those next meeting would be fantastic. And that's my report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I forgot to mention one thing. The school improvement plans, uh, will be on the website within a month, once, once we get them all, we get through them and put them on there, so the public will be able to see them. I forgot to mention that, I'm sorry.
And I'm glad you, uh, brought it up. Uh, several, uh, comments have been made concerning our lead teachers, and, uh, we have our newest lead teacher in science, Mr. David Mincy, with us this evening. Uh, if you'd stand in so we can see it. Mr. Mincy, he is, he's, uh, in science, I understand? Welcome to our committee. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that, uh, the consent agenda, uh, be, uh, accepted into the board's, uh, notes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries, the consent agenda is approved. Uh, we do not have any unfinished business, so we'll proceed with new business, which are board policies, and Mrs. Bowen, I will give you the floor, and, uh, you got a long list, and, uh, we'll just, uh, work through it.
Uh, make yourselves comfortable, folks. Uh, I'm moved that the Lee County Board of Education approved the first reading of policies numbers thirteen-ten slash forty-oh-two, thirteen-twenty slash thirty-five-sixty, seventeen-ten slash forty-twenty-one slash seventy-two-thirty, seventeen-forty-two slash fifty-sixty, twenty-three-oh-two, twenty-five-hundred, thirty-three-twenty, thirty-four-oh-five, thirty-four-twenty, thirty-four-sixty, thirty-four-seventy slash four-thirty-two R, forty-forty slash seventy-three-ten, forty-three-oh-three, forty-three-twenty, forty-three-thirty-five, fifty-twenty-two, fifty-twenty-six slash seventy-two-fifty, fifty-twenty-seven slash seventy-two-seventy-five, fifty-thirty, sixty-three-oh-five, sixty-three-fifteen, sixty-five-fifty, seventy-three-thirty-five, seventy-five-hundred, seventy-seven-thirty, seventy-nine-fifty, ninety, I'm sorry, nine-thousand-ten, nine-thousand-twenty, ninety-one-ten, and ninety-four-hundred. Please be approved on first reading.
The motion is to approve these po- policies on first reading, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any cons-, uh, conversation concerning the bar- board policies? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries, these board policies have been approved as first reading. And, Mr. Akonoshu, if you, uh...
Yeah, we're good, we were shuffling papers.
If you'd like to, uh, make the motion, we can adjourn to closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, or not repubished, record under NCGS Section one-four-three, three-one-eight, dot eleven, A-one.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion concerning the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries, we will retire to closed session.
I'm thinking Dr. Smith's, uh, soda probably got colder out here than it would've been if you carried it in there with you.
Uh, we can go back in there.
This room is cold.
Usually, that's the room that's freezing.
Uh, no, this, maybe it's just, maybe it's all the medicine I'm on, it's got my thermostat messed up, but it's... Oh, sorry. You okay? Yeah, I'm fine.
We can reconvene the open session part of our, of our meeting, and, uh, is there a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the HR report?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The Human Resources Report is, is, uh, approved, and is there a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion we adjourn. Second.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
Don't forget your umbrella again.